Good evening, we want to call to order the board's selectmen's meeting for Monday, February 23rd. Madam Clerk, would you lead us in the pleasurable leadings?
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight at 6:30, coming right up is a joint meeting with the planning board, the housing committee, implement housing, inclusionary zoning amendment possibility, discussion on that. 7:15, organization read mail. 7:20, we have input from both members and the public. 7:30, a public hearing for a common victual's license for Starbucks Corporation at 506 Constitution Ave. 7:40, budget updates and operating budget and capital improvements. 8:10, getting ready for the special and annual town meeting warrants inserting articles. 8:30, town administrator and the assistant town administrator for finance and budget on four different articles, policy introduction, community preservation act, appendix to financial management policy. B, annual town report dedication. C, staffing vacancy reviews for the library positions. D, elder women services, COA, boat donation fund, cooper fund, transportation funding, outreaches the business, and other business around 8:40, 8:50. Now Keith, you want to get us on the stat on this inclusionary?
Sure, thanks.
Possible amendment?
Sure, thanks, Mr. Chairman. First, that we're, we have adopted a housing production plan in Littleton. It was approved by the planning board last December, also by the Board of Selectmen. It was approved by the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development in January. It's good now for five years, and it contains a rather ambitious set of strategies and goals for the town to work on by our own definition in order to stay above 10% and remain masters of our 40B destiny. We had some initial feedback from, from the planning board and from our, the planner, Amarin Toohill, that members of the planning board were interested in exploring whether they could, they could bring an inclusionary zoning bylaw to this May's town meeting. That puts us on a very tight timeframe. The warrant for town meeting closes on Friday, March 20th, and there's only one regular meeting of the planning board that was to take place prior to then. It's right now it's scheduled for Thursday, March 12th. So, the, the hope was that in order to engender some kind of a discussion about that idea before it was, before we ran out of time, why didn't we see if we could bring back our friends from MAPC who worked with us on the housing production plan and perhaps lead a discussion with us about how an inclusionary zoning bylaw might work and, and to see if from that discussion there can be enough direction given to, to produce a draft bylaw which we could then bring back to the planning board in time for its consideration at its next meeting on March 12th. So, so we've assembled a group here. We have, we do have representatives tonight, not a quorum of any, of any group except the selectmen, but we do have Jerry Portante from the planning board. We've got a number of members of the, of the community preservation committee, which is in the housing business for funding. In Bartlett Arby, we have representatives alone from the housing authority and community preservation committee and the housing committee. So, we've got a lot of committees represented. We also have Corinna Milchman, who's a housing planner from MAPC, who is one of the, the staff persons that worked with us on the housing production plan. And Corinna has prepared an outline to walk us through tonight on the issue of an inclusionary zoning bylaw and sort of a related matter of an affordable housing trust fund that if, if whatever mechanism you come up with, if it's not all market-driven and produces additional density from the zoning, then there might be some in, in lieu payments that, that result. In fact, we already, through, through previous efforts of the planning board, we already have in lieu payments from at least one housing developer for Reed Meadow, and we haven't really had a discussion about what, what do you do with that money? But, and, and so that's, that can be part of the discussion that Corinna leads us through as well. We've got a few copies of the printed handout. I'm going to give them to Amarin to, for her to, to distribute as she sees fit. I'll have copies of this available. There, it's, it'll be on the website following tonight's meeting, and you'll be able to watch the outline on the screen. So, I think with that, I would, unless there's any opening statement maybe that, that Jerry or Maron would want to say about what the planning board was looking for in terms of inclusionary zoning, that could help guide the discussion.
I think, point of clarity, I think, I spoke with Mike today on the phone. I think more things, I think the inclusionary works as a tool. I think also, you know, we've got a bunch of open space stuff coming before us right now. There's a lot of big lots coming up, so larger developments. I think one of the thoughts was having an affordable housing component to the open space bylaw. But, the problem is, is we don't actually have zoning, there's no residential zoning in any of Littleton for condos. My guess has to be standalone homes for ownership. So, if we wanted to have that component added, we would need to amend the bylaw, the open space bylaw, to have a condo component or a non-standalone zone that can do outside everything. For instance, some of the open space that are for today, there was some discussion about affordable housing in those open space plans. We don't have a zoning component to accommodate. So, even if we wanted to do that, we couldn't do it. Does that make sense? So, I think the inclusionary works for the, for the downtown common area, but it doesn't work for areas like Foster Street, train station area, that kind of thing, where we have had discussions with Magic, where we talked about having affordable housing in those areas. We don't have a mechanism to accommodate that now, and some of the open space stuff that's coming before us now, it's even preliminary stages, wouldn't be addressed by this. So, it doesn't give us a mechanism to offset it. That, those were our thoughts.
So, that could be, so that could be a further amendment to zoning to address.
So, we would say, I mean, we, we might want to look at like four or five tools that we could use, using open space, using common village, offset funds, and we will build, those types of things that we would apply. I think one of the thoughts planning boards have, we want to have a fixed percentage offset for, say, open space. We didn't really, I didn't really know how that would work. I mean, my concern on that was 10% might not be a great number all the time, might not work economically. We just want to have some mechanism that would allow us to do some type of trading. I think we had a presentation a few, maybe a year and a half ago in there, where they, I think Magic made a presentation. There's a bunch of tools, offsets, land swaps, non-contiguous land swaps. I think that should all be part of the package with an eye towards affordable housing. Those were my thoughts.
Derek, can I ask a question? If, I know this is very preliminary, but would you be thinking of a special permit that your board would actually control?
Yeah, to be honest with you, the mechanism for that, I, I think I would leave that up to council to figure out what's, what's most viable, because I think we want to write the bylaw in a way that, you know, gives, doesn't hamstring anybody one way or the other. We've got to think it through. We don't want to have a bylaw where something comes in, Cijago can't make that work, or if it's applied the wrong way, it doesn't work. You know what I'm saying? Like, so whatever, whatever tools we have, it doesn't matter when it's a special permit or what it's.
Will you have something replaced by, by town meeting, when we meet that deadline to try to get some of these tools in?
Well, I think you're going to want to get it on the floor for town meeting, because like I said, there's a bunch of stuff coming up now, and we're going to miss it. But, these things will be approved, like they're done. So, we would have no opportunity to address it. So, and some of these are preliminary, and they may rush to file ahead of this, but given what's going on in town of Littleton, it would be prudent to get it done sooner rather than later. But, I would also caution, just make sure we do it right, let's not shoot ourselves in the foot.
Mr. McGee?
Yeah, and I'm also in the planning board. This is a discussion of two planning board members, which I haven't been privy of. Yeah, I'm certainly in favor of exploring inclusionary zoning, and this certainly has been part of the housing production plan. I'm not convinced it will be ready for town meeting. And, yeah, inclusionary zoning, it can be very broad, and it can have unintended consequences. There's been legal histories and so on of it. Some of the aspects, we currently have cluster zoning and almost house development when you, as an incentive. And then there are the issues of inclusionary zoning, where is the focus? Is it townwide, or is it in a central area? Certainly for the housing production aspect, we've, you know, had the 40B. It was a hostile 40B, but nonetheless, it is there. One of the things we had was mixed-use zoning in the village common area. We're seeing that taking off. There actually were two projects last time through, 448, King Street, Wayside, kitchens, I guess, is doing apartment, and then on Goldsmith Street, we're having 16 or 17 units being put in. Interestingly enough, no mixed-use, it's all residential, but nonetheless, we're seeing that take off. Yeah, we sort of need a balance, and it's sort of good to know what the consequences are, yeah, before one goes ahead. Yeah, I'd look at their models here of Cambridge and Somerville, I wonder if that's really the best fit for, for Littleton. You know, it can be fairly involved, and I would hope that people would have a good approach to it and not just say, ah, we have to have this on the town board. So, you know, there are other aspects, like a housing trust, that people also have interest in moving ahead with. So, there, there are a number of multiple strands here. You know, whether we do all at the same time is questionable, you know? Do we know what the consequences are? Do we know what the buildup is going to be from that? Yeah, looking at additional housing options certainly makes sense, and I think everyone's in favor of that. It's the details, and that's, that's really showing. I see this as more of an educational aspect rather than saying, okay, we're launching off and we're going to have something ready for town meeting.
Yeah, if I, if I could, that, I agree that there's a whole educational component for ourselves and for the community at large, because anything that's going to town meeting for zoning approval is, you know, we're, we're going to have to make sure it's, it's, it looks right, as Jerry says, and, and it does what we want to do. So, the, the goal tonight, I think, is to try to identify what things might we, we want to pursue, give a, have a list of things for MAPC to do work for us between now and the next planning board meeting, have town council do some things, and then to make a judgment, for the, you know, for the planning board to make a judgment of, of all the things that we might do, what can we actually bring to the May town meeting, and what other things would we have to, you know, consider for November or, or at some future date. But, we did want to, I mean, I was delighted to, to, to have, to hear that the planning board was entertaining some, you know, some measure to bring to town meeting. Well, let's try to figure out what that could be and, and give it, give it a shot. And so, and so that's the goal tonight, and get, getting everyone together. I'd suggest that, that maybe Corinna could walk us through some of the things that she's been researching and could help us frame the discussion. And thanks, thanks for coming back.
My pleasure. Thank you for inviting me back. I'm very excited that you guys are already having these conversations and starting, you know, the process of thinking about which strategies to move ahead on sooner rather than later. So, as Keith mentioned, we're going to talk about inclusionary zoning, and somewhat connected to that, we're going to talk about the affordable housing, the idea of establishing an affordable housing trust fund. So, as you mentioned, there are a lot of models to look at in terms of inclusionary bylaws. About a third of the communities in the state have them, and about 70 communities have affordable housing trust funds. So, this is some of the language from the housing production plan that was adopted and approved. I'll just read it really quickly. Effective and predictable way to increase affordable housing stock. It's really important in terms of leveraging new market rate housing, which it sounds like there is a fair amount in the pipeline, and ensure, as Keith mentioned, that you guys remain above 10%. So, the action plan in the housing production plan was to start discussing your options in terms of inclusionary zoning with the planning board, housing committee, and planning staff, and then move into the drafting process. So, it's great that you guys are already, already there and starting out. So, inclusionary zoning is a municipal bylaw or ordinance. It sounds like you're all pretty familiar with the basic tenet, which is that it requires a minimum percentage of lower and moderate income housing to be provided in new or rehab residential developments. It can be applied either townwide or to a particular area. The programs are either mandatory or voluntary. Usually, either way, they are tied into certain developer incentives to try to make them developer-friendly, not discourage new development. And as part of the bylaw, you can require that the units are created onsite along with the new development or offsite, or as Keith mentioned, you can have a payment in lieu of units, and that's where the affordable housing trust fund usually comes in. So, when you're designing the bylaw, this is sort of the key points that you want to consider that require study and consideration and so on. Mandatory versus voluntary. Either way, they're usually tied to incentives. That can be a density bonus. It can be relaxing of certain requirements such as infrastructural components and so forth. It can be a smaller building envelope. There is a huge menu to choose from. You can apply it to all of Littleton. You can apply it to a particular district. You want to figure out what minimum new development or subdivision size will trigger the inclusionary bylaw. You know, is it going to be a subdivision of two lots, eight lots? Will it be multifamily development of four units, eight units, and so forth? Then you'll want to decide what percent of units you're going to require to be affordable. This ranges within the Commonwealth. Typically, you see somewhere between 10 and 15%. Twelve and a half percent is usually a sweet spot for a lot of communities, but again, it really depends on your market and the size of the municipality. Then you're going to want to decide an income eligibility. Who's eligible for occupying these units? Is it, you know, 65% of AMI, 80% of AMI, and so forth? The level and duration of affordability, often municipalities require that these units are affordable in perpetuity. It makes it, you know, it serves the town, and it makes it a lot simpler for, you know, monitoring purposes. Sometimes it's the life of a building and so forth. I mentioned on, offsite, the payment in lieu of options, and then of course, the bylaw usually covers the whole lease-up process, who's monitoring these units, what's the resale process for ownership, and so forth. That's usually all in the bylaw or the ordinance. So, I do have a few model bylaws that I just want to sort of walk you through. Obviously, there are way more throughout the Commonwealth. These are pretty representative, though, of what you see often, like, pretty much regardless of community type. These are pretty general and applicable throughout. So, that's why I chose them for tonight. So, you can see these columns relate to the bullet points that we just went over. All three that I'm going to take you through are mandatory, which means, you know, if it's triggered according to X, Y, and Z, you have to supply these units or payment in lieu. So, in Cambridge, it's 10 or more units, 10,000 square feet. That's pretty high. That's because they're a high-density city. 15% required, affordable in perpetuity for the life of the building, 65% of AMI. The density bonus is up to 30%, so the special granting authority has a lot of flexibility there in terms of what kind of bonus they're going to provide. On-site, they have to be provided onsite except in special circumstances, and that's when you can get a payment in lieu of which goes straight to their affordable housing trust, and I'll talk about that in a little bit. For Somerville, again, so it's triggered at eight or more units. It's a mandatory program, 12 and a half percent. That's the sweet spot I mentioned. Affordable in perpetuity. Their density bonus is less, 20%. Again, this, these are high-density cities. Your bonus will probably, would probably look quite different. Oops. And then again, onsite, you see a lot of times in these bylaws, they have to be, have to, have to, have to be required onsite except in special circumstances. And so, often there are a lot of special circumstances that you'll see the special granting authority acknowledge. And then in Chatham, mandatory, you'll see here their project size. They talk about subdivision rather than just multifamily. And 10%, it's a little lower, affordable in perpetuity. The income eligibility is also a little lower, 70%. Density bonus of 10%. Here, they, they say you can provide the units on or offsite, or you can do a land donation. The developer can give the municipality land. And then there's also payment in lieu that goes to affordable housing trust fund. So, speaking of affordable housing trust fund, this was another strategy identified in the housing production plan that Littleton would consider establishing a municipal affordable housing trust fund, and that if you were to adopt an inclusionary zoning bylaw, this would be a good way to have more flexibility in terms of spending money, making sure that the money that comes in for affordable housing actually gets spent on affordable housing, doesn't have to go to town meeting for allocation as it would if it went into your general fund. So, the action plan for that was to work with the Board of Selectmen, identify staff and volunteers to draft the trust charter and the bylaws, and then to move forward with appointing members, adopting it and appointing members. So, I just want to go over what an affordable housing trust fund is for those who may not know. As I alluded to, it's a separate fund for local initiatives to create and preserve affordable housing, and that means that the money in the fund has to be used for affordable housing creation, development, preservation, and so forth. So, those are some of the things you can use it for up there. So, the connection to inclusionary zoning, it comes in through this payment in lieu of unit option that is usually part of a bylaw or ordinance. And as I mentioned, if the municipality doesn't have affordable housing trust fund, those monies usually go into the general fund. They can be allocated to, you know, things that are not housing-related, and it's also usually quite complicated for getting, you know, extracting the money from that fund. Affordable housing trust fund is a really easy, accessible way to maintain those funds. So, moving forward, these are some of the things that I imagine we'll be discussing, and definitely some things that need to be considered. A lot of towns, when they're drafting a bylaw, an inclusionary bylaw, ordinance, or program, will set up sort of a, a vetting committee to make these decisions. You know, each of the bullets that we reviewed before in terms of when would it be triggered, what would be the incentives be, what's the affordability level, and so forth. And oftentimes, municipalities will invite developers to join, the planning board members or the housing committee members who make up this committee, to make sure that they really are coming up with a developer-friendly bylaw. Another step that municipalities take is, sometimes they'll conduct a residential market analysis, and that's another way to make sure that your bylaw is gonna be developer-friendly. A lot of municipalities don't do this, it's not necessary to go into that detail, but it is an option that some take. Again, the payment in lieu of, this is not always a recommended element of an inclusionary zone, zoning bylaw, and that's because a lot of municipalities don't have the capacity to really make sure that the units get developed, even if they're, come up with the appropriate fee that a developer will pay and they have the money. Takes a lot of capacity beyond just dollars and cents. So, it's not always a recommended option, but it is a great option if you want to sort of increase your state matching base for the CPA fund. This money can go into CPA before, would go into an Affordable Housing Trust and increase the base for that. Again, there's a lot of legalese in developing these bylaws, so the committee would want to make sure that, you know, you don't come up against any, any legal activity there, and then the necessary political support. So, those are some things you want to think about moving forward. There are a lot of resources out there, both on our website and on MHP and DHCDs, that can sort of lay out in greater detail than we have time for tonight, sort of your checklist that you want to go through when you're developing these draft, draft bylaws, and then, you know, you can look at the model bylaws we discussed and many others, I have some copies here tonight. So, that's sort of my spiel, and, you know, we can go back and discuss in greater detail, you know, some of these bullets and what you might want to consider or not consider for Littleton if we have the time.
I just had a comment on, on the term developer-friendly. What I was, what I was choosing to hear from that was that we wanted to, that you, that you want to make sure that the bylaw, if you put it in place, would actually motivate a developer to behave in a way that corresponded to what, what, what the incentives in the bylaw are.
Yeah.
And just, just as an example, when we had adopted the over 55 bylaw, we're looking for additional density for, you know, for ownership units, we found in one case where the developer did what the bylaw said we wanted him to do, he did it, and then the market didn't work, he couldn't sell them, so we, we came to a, you know, an accommodation with them to take, to let him out of his deed restriction in return for putting money, which we will put into an affordable housing fund. But it wasn't, but if you will, the bylaw language wasn't, wasn't reflective of what the market would produce, and, and so what you're, what I'm choosing to hear your advice as, is that, that if we put a, a bylaw in place to alter market behavior, the developer's behavior in a way that, that's dictated in the bylaw, that we, we would actually like to see that that, that happens, that it, that the, that the developers got enough of incentive there to alter behavior and give us the affordable units that we want as, as a result of that, so.
Right. It needs to be feasible.
Yeah, I just, just to comment, I mean, so, we never really know, or I don't know personally, but it seems like during these meetings, we never really know, like, what is, what is the prevailing market rate when we do something, when we did the 55, like, we gave him market, right, minus the difference, and we took that and put it in the fund. Some of the bullets up here probably require us to know what those rates are, what, what is the tax offset for these developers if they were to come in, are there tax credits involved, are there things they're getting on the backend that we're not aware, that we should be factoring when we make these decisions? I mean, that's not always transparent during the process. So, I think whatever the bylaw says, we also need some type of reference material so that we, in current reference materials, we know what the state of affairs are, so we don't end up giving away something we don't need to give away. It's just a little more transparent to all parties that are involved, which it's not always that explicit.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, do you have any questions?
I have a question.
When we look at the next steps, we've been arranging the bylaw committee. If we were to follow that advice by May town meeting, seems a bit problematic.
Yeah.
For the monthly process, I should think. So, I think Jerry, or Don, some of caution again, is going too quickly on this, and I think that's probably reasonably good advice in this instance. It's now the end of February, you know, looking for something at the beginning of May. So, real fast public math, that's March and April, two months, and a couple of weeks or so. All good things to pursue, so it's not a, I don't want it to be a lead balloon, it's not to pursue. Just think as we start thinking about this, haste might not be our friend in this particular instance. Jerry mentioned a couple of things, there's some projects that I'll probably go through that would be short, you know, would not benefit from our perspective for this, but then as we have something going on every six-month period, it's not like, six months from now, all development in the town of Littleton ceases, so let's be quick to get this done. It'll be a continuing process, and we may miss the boat on a couple of these that are staring us in the face at this point. But hitting all the important things, the legalese is part of it, and to Keith's point, you know, trying to define the builder-friendly, I'd use the word, you know, how do we encourage the behavior that's beneficial, mutually beneficial to the builder and to the town is, would have to be built into this as best as we possibly could. So, that's what I'd suggest at this point. So, if we're looking at actually forming committee that we think we should get the ball rolling on here, that's where we may be at this point, though.
So, if I may, M A P C does work with municipalities all the time to develop these bylaws, and the two-month span is definitely doable, to have an article drafted by then. We don't need the actual bylaw to get the warrant, is my understanding, in March, that would be too fast, but I think May is feasible to put together a committee and study these issues and draft something.
Right, so you have a solid history at M A P C of doing this in two months?
Mm-hmm.
Hey, Nelson Wood?
Hi, Nelson. I appreciate your presentation. And first, I want to echo what Paul said, is that, you know, we, we see a need, and we need to look at it, but if we move too fast, we may address needs we never intended to address, and we may create an environment we never intended to create. Time and time again, the townspeople have said that they want to preserve open spaces as one of their highest priorities, and that discussion has to occur as part of this. And, you know, Jerry mentioned it, that, you know, what's, what's the trade-off for this? But I, we, we have the potential here, if this is not done correctly, of dramatically changing the community, the town, a very different look and feel to it. So, I think we have to be quite careful, and we have to do it in such a way that we maintain what the townspeople have told us time and time again the goals are. The goal of, of affordable housing is a great goal, and we need to address that. But doing that with inclusionary and developer-friendly methods has to be done with great care. And if we are going to create such a community, I think it needs to be well-represented by more than just town officials, but also townspeople. And we can look at these things piece by piece. The other thing I noticed is that, you know, your, your examples are, are a little bit different than what we're looking at here. You said that a third of the communities have inclusionary zoning. Are there any in this general area, communities this size, that have adopted it, and what challenges have they faced as they did it?
There, there definitely are communities in the subregion that have adopted inclusionary zoning. I'm not as familiar with them, off the top of my head, to tell you about, like, the specific challenges and successes they've had, but that's definitely something I can look into further with more time.
I, I look at communities around us, you know, just around us, Groton, Harvard, Carlisle, Bolton, and those communities, and I wonder what this, you know, how, how they would look at something like this. I don't believe they have any, but I don't know that for sure, because those are towns where, also where the townspeople have said, well, you know, we need a ratio of preservation of community and address the issues at hand, which in this case is affordable housing. I don't think we can let the 10 percent guide us into, into a quagmire that we may regret further. I think we've got to be very intelligent about how we approach this.
Just one comment for Corina. I think she brings up a good point, her experience with M A P C, bringing these types of bylaws and developing these types of bylaws in the time for May town meeting. To have a placeholder on the warrant, I don't think it'd be a bad thing, get the group together, see how they're rolling, see how it goes, with the, the participation rate is in town and regards to the meetings, and ultimately, it's town, town meeting decision. So, I wouldn't be so opposed not to go with Jerry, as Jerry said, you know, if we can get it going, and Corina is confident that she's done it in the past, let's get a placeholder on the warrant. And I'd like to see at least a placeholder and get the group together and see if we can get a committee that's fluid and get a document out for town meeting.
Not the wrong way to place a hold.
Yeah, okay, I agree with all the comments, and especially, yeah, Jim, so let's see what we can do. If it works, great.
Otherwise, we just wait for our next town meeting.
Mr. Gibson, you had mentioned you want...
Two questions for clarification. One, I'm trying to understand the steps to completion in this process. It's unclear to me where it is. Maybe someone can help me understand. I'm trying to figure out whether the plan has been approved, does it have to, where does it fit in with town meeting, what does the town have to do? It's not clear to me.
Right now, we just in the, in the...
Yeah, the, the process is we're, tonight we're discussing specific measures that would require town meeting approval, and, and we've identified a potential zoning amendment for inclusionary zoning or anything else that, that might come out of that discussion. That's one. And the other is to have town meeting vote to establish a so-called Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which is a mechanism that does, it does require a town meeting vote to do that. Boxborough, for example, has, has long ago established an Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and, and, but it does require a town meeting vote. What is the, what took place before tonight and was the adoption of the Housing Production Plan, which was, which has gone through all the steps that are required, which was approval by the local planning board, approval by the local Board of Selectmen, submission by the Selectmen to the State Department of Community, Housing and Community Development, and then approval by that state agency. Those steps have taken place. Approval of that plan provides a framework, it provided a, generated a list of potential strategies that we could do, and in implementing that plan, you know, we all get to decide, the community gets to decide, which of those strategies in the plan do we want to, do we want to implement, especially if some of those, for those which require town meeting votes. Any zoning amendments that are advocated in, in the plan, only, we only get to do if we, if the, the voters approve. So, we're looking right now, I'd say, for the long term, we're looking at all of the recommendations that are in that plan, and deciding over time which ones do we want to pursue, and in what order, and in what timeframe. The specific discussion tonight was meant to see, is there anything that we can bring to this May's town meeting with, with the idea that the planning board have expressed particular interest in exploring inclusionary zoning bylaw? And, and so we wanted to have the discussion, can we bring it forward or not? Can we, can we do all of the things that we need to do to get a zoning bylaw approved? We didn't decide, I don't think we've decided that question tonight, but we're, you know, hearing the sentiment that, that, that there's a, that there's a way to preserve the option by the planning board putting a zoning amendment on the warrant. They have their hearing prior to town meeting, the specifics of the bylaw would have to be clear at that hearing, they make a recommendation, and as a result of the hearing, typically, I mean, we've sat through all Bennett, those sorts of hearings where sometimes we're all set to go and we go to town meeting, and other times that we see we're not ready to go, and, and it doesn't go forward until a later town meeting.
Thank you for that clarification. Am I hearing you say that town meeting responding to these bylaw amendments, that is, that is the choice point, that is the decision point? If the town doesn't approve that, then this project is dead. Is that what I'm hearing?
If town meeting does not approve an inclusionary zoning bylaw, we don't get to do what an inclusionary zoning bylaw would allow us to do, that it would require a town meeting. Those things that require town meeting vote in order to proceed, we can only do if we get town meeting approval.
Okay, so, I, okay, the other question is, it's not clear to me, who is the keeper of the vision for the town of Littleton?
True.
Yeah, I feel the same way.
Is it anybody around this table? Is it the Board of Selectmen? Is it the finance? I'm not sure who's the keeper of the town vision.
It is the vision, we should carry...
I'm sorry?
We should carry out the vision of the people of this town.
What is the vision for the town of Littleton? I want to see it in writing.
What we have is various planning tools that we've used and, and things, M A P C was part of that. In those processes, what we have for information there is essentially what I got myself with, and in many cases, that information is the preservation of the sense of community of Littleton, preservation of iconic, if, if you will, I hate to use that term, properties in town and open space. Those surface time and time again. Along with that is our schools and other things, but we can get into a real long discussion about that, and we, we don't really need to. But I think in the end, we as public officials have a responsibility to act in a manner that the town has in their mind, and we had better stay connected to that.
And we're in the process right now of updating the master plan, which is the vision of the town, which the townspeople do participate in. So, I would suggest to anybody that has those same questions, by all means, once we start meeting on this master plan, come out, let's hear what your vision, what, what the townspeople's vision of the town should be, too.
Thank you.
You know?
Shouldn't the vision be...
We have, we have regulatory boards to implement that vision. We have, we have regulatory laws that we must implement, but the actual vision and where we're going in the future, I think, is the town's vision and the citizens of the town.
Am I hearing you say there's no vision now?
No, there is, there is. There's a master plan right now. It's being updated right now.
Okay.
So, yes, there is.
Okay, thank you.
It's just old. It needs to be updated, based on, you know, trends of change and all that.
Thank you.
Okay. Isn't the guy...
Yeah, as far as I know, people haven't started meetings on the master plan as, what, 12 years old? I mean, that is the vision, that is the community at large creating what they're doing. This is a sequencing problem. You set the vision first, and then you get the zoning to fit in. In fact, there's legislation saying the mass, in the future, the zoning should fit into the master plan. So, if, you know, I, I looked, wait, what, two months? You know, maybe someone can technically whip together a bylaw, but planning board, they meet once a month, you know, two meetings, Selectmen, two meetings. I, I don't see how we can have a community-based bylaw that really fits. Maybe someone can certainly whip off something and write it up as a draft, but that doesn't necessarily fit with the community. The community should have a part in this, because it will have quite a consequence, it will have quite an impact. And what, what's the rush for having it in two months versus seven months? You know, I mean, let's, let's do it right, and let's have the master plan update itself. You know, the last master plan was around, we had one traffic light, things have changed.
I just want to point out, this bylaw we're talking... I just want to point out, this bylaw we're talking about has no impact on how many lots get built. We're just talking about density, trade-offs. We're not talking... I mean, if you come in with a 55-unit housing development, you're going to get 55 units. What we're talking about is having some component of that 55 be a form. So those 55 units are going to get built no matter what, whether it's an open space plan or non-open space plan. I just want to ask, we're not talking about adding more lots to Littleton. We're just talking about type of lots, the type of housing that gets built, just to make a point. And just understand that if we go over our lot, okay, even if we're five houses shy of being having the right number for affordable housing, someone can come in here and put a 450-unit 40B. That's what we're talking about protecting against. So we're going to do another 55 lots right now in the next three months, and all the A and I's that are going off and everything else. I mean, there's a lot of housing in Littleton. Just keep that in the back of your mind when you think about this bylaw.
We're not going to have a 40B right away.
You have no idea.
And you have to prepare for it. I mean, and the whole 40B, the whole 40B discussion, the one that we just went through, you know, our housing plan was based on X amount of houses being built per year. We've exceeded that. So that 2020 date is creeping a lot closer than 2020, our next census summer. Just makes sense. So at least get a warrant, get a placeholder on the warrant. Let's do, at least do that, and have, let's get a group together and see how it progresses. That's my view.
And just to comment on that, you know, I've mentioned several times, you can have a friendly 40B, you can do things we want. And actually, the last selectman spoke, said, ah, next time. Well, we failed on that, and we got a hostile one. If you still have an issue with that, you can plan one and decide all the parameters that work, the right location, the right scale, the right conditions. But, you know, we hadn't even done that. I mean, the concern is, ah, we're going to be at risk for another 40B, which is going to take a while, because, you know, the last one's, what, 180, 200 units? You know, we could plan a 40B in the right place, the right time, but...
Only if you're above the 10%.
Right.
Only if you're above the 10%.
Can we just ask Karina, if she can get that local list? You know, Alex asked a question about local towns and similar demographics. That'd be very helpful. Same, you know, we could contact some folks in those towns also and see what worked well if they have any regrets, what they may be, and help guide us. It'd be helpful if it's okay.
Absolutely, yeah. I'd be more than happy to turn that around real quick for you.
Thank you.
All right, I think we're all set. Thank you, Karina.
Thank you, Karina. So we'll work with the planning board and the housing committee and this board and see if we can get a group together.
Do I get a group that meets outside of our regulations?
Outside of your regulations. We would have to be meeting between now and March 12th to just see what can be done and what can't be done, so.
Give it a shot, right?
Give it a shot, all right. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Thank you, Karina.
Mr. Bruno, now with this section, reading mail, do we have?
Yeah, just a couple of items, Mr. Chairman. We have the annual letter from the Central Massachusetts Mosquito Control District. I'm really looking forward to the return of mosquitoes, I think we're sure after... The short sign of warmer weather, huh? Exchange one problem for another. But we do have a recommendation from the Board of Health to continue our participation in the Central Mass Mosquito Control District, and we'll be scheduling that for a board vote in the future. Also, in your packet, you, I think you all received a copy of the Beacon Ware. Who is that on page three? Shaking hands with the assistant secretary.
Oh, jeez, isn't that something, huh? I didn't bring mine. I got it on the fridge.
Assistant Housing Secretary.
I cut that picture out and put on my fridge.
Oh, did you? Okay, very good. Very good. And I also wanted to mention, this Friday morning at the Old Bedford Town Hall is, will be the annual magic legislative breakfast. I'll send you out information about that, if anyone would like to come. It starts at 8:00. It'll be over by 10:00. We usually get a large number of the senators and representatives from our district that come there, and it's a good chance to ask them for things. Top of the list this time will be, you know, a new workable MBTA, so we're trying to do for...
Just don't close down the transfer station, we're okay.
Very good. Thank you.
We have a public hearing at 7:30, so is there anything on here we can...
Want to do public input?
Public input, yeah.
Public input.
Anyone for public input? Seeing none, the board input, anybody?
For me today.
It was nice, Indian summer on Sunday, up to 34, 35 degrees.
Forty degrees on my side.
Well, see, it's always on the other side of the tracks, Mr. Knox.
On the better side of the tracks.
Oh, of course, in your eyes.
Not in the Lake District.
What? What?
That's what I'm talking about.
I think, because of all the weather we've had, fire chief and emergency managers and directors and just about everybody across the state has been talking about the hazards of five feet of snow on our roofs present. And people get snowed in, and I would just urge everybody to sort of keep track of your neighbor. There's some people that don't have the ability to shovel themselves out or to help themselves out to deal with ice dams and stuff like that. So if you do the neighborly thing and look around and see if there's somebody in need of assistance, it'd be something to consider.
Thank you.
Still 10 minutes ago.
Yeah.
The library staff's here.
Yeah, we could do the library.
Sure.
The library having vacancy reviews. That is 7C.
Bonnie, oh, she's usually sitting right in front of me.
Oh, I gotta take a right-hand turn here.
So recently, one of my library technicians resigned. She moved on to bigger and better things. That's why I'm here with a vacancy. So I'm looking for permission to hire someone internally. It would likely be one of our library assistants, that's the next position below library tech. It's a 19-hour position, grade five. It would be a lower step than what our previous library tech was at. So there'd be some savings in the budget. And then once that library tech position would be filled, we need to build a library assistant position. That would have to go out externally. It would be a six-hour position. It would have to go out externally, because that's pretty much the lowest position. So when I, on my staff applied for it, it'd be a demotion. So it would be a six-hour position, a grade three, step one. Both positions are, were already planned for in the budget, so I don't really see any to the budget, either for this fiscal year or for next fiscal year.
Everything's all set?
Yes. Both positions are non-benefit eligible, so neither one of them impact the fringe benefit accounts. And as you said, one is through promotion, coming in at a lower statute, and the new hire was a different one. Some small things.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to grant the library director's request under the staffing vacancy review policy, one, to fill a part-time, non-benefit eligible grade five library technician by internal promotion and further, two, to fill a resulting vacancy in a part-time, non-benefit eligible grade three library assistant position with no net increase in the staffing level.
Seconded? Moving in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good for you.
Thanks a lot.
Wanted to... Alden, human?
Sure. 7D. 7D1, 7D2, those two.
Yeah, these are a couple of requests voted on by the Council on Aging, use Cooper Fund money for the Energy Assistance Program, and the other is, they're looking to do a letter to local businesses soliciting donations for the Transportation Fund, which in a previous meeting, you gave permission for them to advertise in their monthly newsletter to, for, and this is a further outreach step.
Anything, Tina?
Just that you hope everything will work out well with both the acceptance of the Cooper Funds and the transportation.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to receive and deposit a gift of $10,000 from the Henry Vincent Cooper Charitable Foundation into a special gift fund established on November 2nd, 2009 pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 44, Subsection 53A for energy and other assistance for needy Littleton residents.
Seconded? Moving in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
7D2. So this is for the transportation fundraising that we voted to say, go for it. And move that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to its policy on solicitation and acceptance of monetary and non-monetary gifts for public purposes to approve the request in the Council on Aging to send a letter to local businesses appealing for donations for transportation with donations received therefrom to be deposited in the special gift fund established by the Board of Selectmen pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 44, Subsection 53A on June 23, 2014 for the transportation program of the Department of Elder and Human Services.
Seconded? Moving in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Tina.
Thank you.
Annual Town Report, 7D.
That one, yeah, that one typically, the format is to dedicate it to those who died in the previous year, who had given some level of service to the town government. And I think the town clerk has identified a couple of potential candidates on the list.
Yeah, I think we've all probably gone through the list too, and if there's anyone else you want to add, two stand right out.
I would like to add one name for consideration, even though it was not in, actually, 2014, but the recent passing of Don Smith, you know, his particular involvement in the town and the fact that we won't be considering his name for recognition for a whole another year from now if we don't make an exception to this. Perhaps some note in the town report about his service to the town or something like that in recognition. It is unique in that he has served the fire department and continued to volunteer work, personnel board, selectmen, conservation committee, military, and it's a long list.
No, I don't disagree. I just don't know what our policy's been in the past. I mean, I'd love to have Don on this list since it's more recent.
Yeah, I think you can do whatever you want.
Okay.
Ready for a motion? Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to dedicate the 2014 annual town report to the ongoing service of volunteer citizens who contribute to all aspects of maintaining the community of Littleton, whose service has been critical in retaining our small town character and spirit, and include the list of whom we lost in 2014, in this case, 2015, who served the town in an official capacity, including Henry Stimson Harvey, Don Smith, Catherine Ian Peddic.
Seconded?
Moving in second, include those three names, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you.
We have the applicant for the public hearing. Okay.
We just wait for 7:30?
Yeah, I guess. Great. I was all set to have a product placement tonight, but I rushed back. Too much traffic, I didn't get the stuff from Starbucks and Acton.
You don't want me to comment, do you? I didn't think so.
I did write a comment to Keith saying, you know...
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe we'll die this one.
Well, it'll be Dunkin' Donuts for Starbucks one.
Well, your picture is on the fridge, so rest comfortably on that, okay?
Just got to get on a milk carton.
Want to call a public hearing? The Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on Monday, February 3rd, February 23rd, 2015, at 7:30 in room 103 of the Town Office Building, 37 Shattuck Street, Littleton, Mass, to consider the application for Carmen Victor's license as requested by Melissa Sullivan, manager, on behalf of Starbucks Corporation Doing Business as Starbucks Coffee at the property located at 506 Constitution Ave., Littleton, Mass. 01460, identified on the SSS map as map R18 parcel 1-1. Comments thereon may be submitted in writing to the Selectmen Town Administrator's Office, 37 Shattuck Street, Littleton, Mass, no later than Friday, February 20th, or in person at the hearing. Do we have anything in writing?
Nothing from the public. We had staff comments, and that was it.
So the floor is yours.
Okay, obviously, I'm not Melissa Sullivan. My name's Daniel Brennan, and I handle a lot of permits and licenses for Starbucks. Melissa was unable to make it, but she's currently the store manager over in Acton at Kelly's Corner. The store is going to have 26 seats inside, 16 seats outside. We put on applications 5:00 AM to 11:00 PM, because that's going to be like the latest that would be open, but usually that changes roughly to 5:30 to 10:00, but we like to keep our opening open if the town doesn't have a problem with it. We plan on opening roughly two weeks from now, so, yeah.
So you're right at the end of the building?
Yeah. Two, three weeks.
Melissa, go for the chief, fire chiefs, and the police chief. Do we have anybody else staying open till 11:00 at night, the other establishments? As far as the coffee shops?
Where can you get coffee at 11:00, apart from the police station?
I'm just asking, I don't know. I mean...
Convenience, convenience.
Most of the satellite Dunkin' Donuts either shut down at 10:00 or 11:00. But also, they're going to have, you know, as the gears up down there, you know, movie theater, you're going to have a lot of other things that are going to be open well past 10:00 o'clock down there, so.
Remember the restaurants that are...
Restaurants, cinema, you know, other things that I'm hearing. So it'll be interesting to see if they come back and ask for past 11:00 o'clock at some point.
Yeah, exactly what Matt said. Dunkin' Dunks is usually more closed 9:30 to 10:00.
McDonald's is open till 10:00, of course.
Okay, good. Thank you. Please, are there any questions?
I'm just curious about the corporate structure. Is this a franchise, or how does this work?
Corporation. So most Starbucks is our corporate. There's roughly 25,000 corporate stores. There are some franchisees. You'll find those like in Barnes &amp; Noble or Target, stuff like that. Those are usually franchisees. But for the most part, almost all Starbucks are corporate-owned. So they all have a prototype, they're all very similar in their finishes and stuff like that, so.
So the manager will be an employee of Starbucks?
Oh, yeah, definitely. She already is, she's the manager over in Acton right now. She's going to be moving over.
Are there any questions from the board? Questions from the public?
Should we close the public hearing?
I want to make a motion, close the public hearing.
Seconded? Move that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 140, Subsection 6, to approve the application for Starbucks Corporation Doing Business as Starbucks Coffee and the four-year common particular license on the premises. Is it 5... This is a question, is it 501 or 506? I saw in your comments, Fire Chief, that you thought it was 501.
I think they're 506.
Okay, all right. Just want to make sure. Premises at 506 Constitution Ave., the point in Littleton, Mass.
Moving in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Congratulations.
See you in two weeks.
I'll buy you a coffee, we're going to be up all night.
See you in two weeks.
Is it 501 or 506? I saw in your comments, Fire Chief, that you thought it was 501.
I think they're 506.
Okay, all right. Just want to make sure. Premises at 506 Constitution Ave., the point in Littleton, Mass.
Seconded.
Move that the board of selectmen vote pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter 140, Subsection 6 to approve the application for Starbucks Corporation Doing Business as Starbucks Coffee and the four-year common particular license on the premises. Is it 501 or 506? I saw in your comments, Fire Chief, that you thought it was 501.
I think they're 506.
Okay, all right. Just want to make sure. Premises at 506 Constitution Ave., the point in Littleton, Mass.
Seconded.
Move that the board of selectmen vote pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter 140, Subsection 6 to approve the application for Starbucks Corporation Doing Business as Starbucks Coffee and the four-year common particular license on the premises. Is it 501 or 506? I saw in your comments, Fire Chief, that you thought it was 501.
I think they're 506.
Okay, all right. Just want to make sure. Premises at 506 Constitution Ave., the point in Littleton, Mass.
Seconded.
Move that the board of selectmen vote pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter 140, Subsection 6 to approve the application for Starbucks Corporation Doing Business as Starbucks Coffee and the four-year common particular license on the premises. Is it 501 or 506? I saw in your comments, Fire Chief, that you thought it was 501.
I think they're 506.
Okay, all right. Just want to make sure. Premises at 506 Constitution Ave., the point in Littleton, Mass.
Seconded.
Move that the board of selectmen vote pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter 140, Subsection 6 to approve the application for Starbucks Corporation Doing Business as Starbucks Coffee and the four-year common particular license on the premises. Is it 501 or 506? I saw in your comments, Fire Chief, that you thought it was 501.
I think they're 506.
Okay, all right. Just want to make sure. Premises at 506 Constitution Ave., the point in Littleton, Mass.
Seconded.
Move that the board of selectmen vote pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter 140, Subsection 6 to approve the application for Starbucks Corporation Doing Business as Starbucks Coffee and the four-year common particular license on the premises. Is it 501 or 506? I saw in your comments, Fire Chief, that you thought it was 501.
I think they're 506.
Moving on to budget updates. I did have the pleasure to speak with the chairman of the school committee, and he, you might have some slides, too, to present.
Correct.
Before I do so, though, I'd just like to turn it over to you.
Um...
Turn it over to Bonnie, not turn it over to you, sorry.
That's okay. I'm on my way. Since the last time we met, we have received some of the detailed information, and I would like to thank the school committee and the staff for providing that regarding the school department's requested budget of $17,833, the requested town appropriation of $17,833. I have been able to go through some of the numbers to try and validate them and just review and see the level of staffing scenario that was requested. I think it's the common selected that, just to make sure, you know, we identified any staffing increases as part of it and called them out separately. So, I did, I was able to go through the request, and on the second page of the memo, I kind of highlighted it in a chart to show what the request was made up of and how it was reviewed. It's not a recommendation, it's just a review of what the request was.
Does he have this same chart?
Yes. Yes. So, starting with the 15, the fiscal 2015 appropriation and identifying the increases or decreases going forward. The town meeting appropriation for this fiscal year was $16,700,000. In the detailed spreadsheets that were provided by the school department, there was $612,246 identified as salary increases. So, of that, $512,000 were actual step lane or cola increases that needed to be applied, and there was $100,000 identified as 1.5 FTE new staffing at the high school. Also in there, I did notice there was a position that was listed as vacant for all of 2015, the current fiscal year, but proposed as being filled for fiscal 2016. So, I just identified that as a staffing addition because it's not currently filled, but I know that that's, that's going to be a point of discussion. It's just identified in the works that were provided. I'm not entirely sure with the staff what the position is, but I do know that it was identified at the high school. And the staffing funding was at $74,016. So, I backed that off as, as an increase in staffing. Also not included were retirement savings, so as teachers were notified, notified the school department that they would be retiring and new hires would presumably come in at a lower step. It was identified that about $75,000 in retirement savings would be recognized, so I backed that off. Special ed is kind of the, you know, I know we're going to have a lot of discussion about special ed increases. Special ed increase was referenced at $403,000. Now, when I looked at the information provided by the department on special ed itself, and we're talking out-of-district placements or tuition costs primarily, or exclusively, it was identified that there was $403,000 more needed. However, if you look at the costs from '15 to '16, it's actually a reduction. So, if you take the 2015 costs and look at the 2016, there's actually a $25,000 reduction in actual tuition and out-of-district placement costs for that period. However, that's exacerbated by a reduced amount of circuit breaker funding in the same, in the fiscal year. Right now, there's $826,000 available in circuit breaker funding to be expended. Next year, there'll be $700,000. So, that $25,000 savings is offset by about $125,000 in reduced revenue. So, it nets to about $100,000, and that's referenced there. And I'll go back to the special ed after. But also identified was Chapter 222 expenses. I believe that these are the expenses for educating children that are put out of school for a period of time. They might be for disciplinary reasons, but they need to be educated, and there's a cost associated with that. So, that's kind of an unfunded mandate. There's no available revenue for that that I know of, so it's kind of something that they, they have no control over. So, I left that in. Any other expenses? I tried, I just backed out to keep in line with the budget message that was to keep the expenses level and no increases to expenses that could be managed. Going through that exercise, I come up with a town meeting appropriation of $17,192,484. The current budget figure that I'm holding is $17,250,000. So, it's, it's under the figure that I have, but I'm still holding that $17,250 at this time. I also referenced the use of school choice funds that, that was provided as part of those budget documents and the circuit breaker usage. So, the total spending with those two identified accounts, which aren't all of them, but just those two named, would be $18,77,484, or just shy of a 3% increase. And again, with the figure that I'm holding, it's about a 3.3% increase at $550,000. Now, Steve Mark, the business manager, and I did have a discussion about the circuit break, at the, I'm sorry, special education costs and getting to the $403,000 figure. And when I went through the figures with him, it really became apparent that the, the $403,000 increase is something that is happening, not to the $403,000 degree, but in fiscal '15. If you look at the accounts as they're budgeted for fiscal 2015, for those particular expenses, what was presented as the budget was $750,000 from circuit breaker. And then there's two appropriations within the town meeting appropriation, one for $950,000 and one for $700,000. If you add those up, that's $2.35 million. What's actually available is a little bit more in circuit breaker, so there's $826,000. So, when I add the, the actual circuit breaker available with that $950 and $700,000, it's $2.76 million available. If you go to the fiscal 2015 special ed costs as presented in this set of documents, it's $2.738 million. So, within the '15 budget with the out-of-district placements, there's a shortage of $262,000 today, this fiscal year. So, what would happen in a normal year is that difference would come out of other reserves, and in this case, that would be school choice or something else. That is, these costs were not built in as part of the budget as presented, but they're here, so they need to be paid. So, the budget for fiscal 2016 incorporates that figure and brings it forward into 2016. So, I think that there's a couple of different scenarios that could be looked at, a higher use of the school choice funds. We typically get $400,000 annually. The balance that I'm estimating for the end of 2015, after we pay that higher amount of, of special ed costs, would be about $550,000. I think it's an important conversation to have, what is a good level of reserves to have so that you're protected against unanticipated increases. But I want to make it clear, there is no increase in special ed costs in these documents from '15 to '16. The increase is something that's in '15 from '14 to '15.
So, we got this on Friday, and we took a look at it. The $512,000 for steps and lanes, and then the, the spot that Bonnie identified as the staff at the high school, that is a librarian that we have budgeted for and paid for year in and year out. The librarian from last year retired. We have not filled that position. We haven't been able to find a hire that satisfies all our requirements. We've been paying an aide to staff the library, so it's a lot less than if we paid a full-time librarian. What happened was when, before Steve sent the information over to Bonnie, he had pulled that number out for his own purposes, his own analysis, and hadn't quite put it back in, in the, in the correct manner, so it wasn't reflected correctly. So, if you take the $512,000 minus the $74,000, that's a, a net of $438,000, and that's the right number. Really, and if you look at the second page of the thing I, of the memo I just gave you or the spreadsheet I just gave you, I kind of just took Bonnie's table and reworked it a little bit, and in the last column, the town review adjusted, instead of it being a $512 increase in steps and lanes, it's that $438,000. So, we agree on that. It's just how we tweak it and show it, but it nets out to what Bonnie has on her reviewed amount, so that's fine. Although I do want to reiterate, that's not a new position. It's an existing position. It's just vacant for this year. We fully expect to have it staffed again. What the actual number is, it may not very well be $74,000. It may be a little less, we don't know. It depends on who we hire. The problem is librarians are, it's a very specific job, so you don't have as much leeway in terms of who you hire as if you were bringing in a regular classroom person, so it'll be pretty close to that. In terms of the, you know, backing out the $100,000 for the one and a half proposed new staff, I can see why you would be modeling that at the moment. We have particular points of view about that. We don't necessarily agree that we would pull it out and just leave it out, but that's certainly part of the discussion we can have moving forward. Retirement savings, what we did is, we know, we know at the moment who's put their papers in to retire. It could, there could be more, we don't know. And we just took a model at their current salary. If we averaged a master's plus five credit hours for each of those positions, we would net out about a $76,000 savings. That's not to say that we would, each person would be an M5. Some might be just masters, some might be masters plus 10. Typically, year by year, when we've done this type of thing, we, we do like an M5 as an assumption, and we're usually pretty close in terms of what we think the savings is going to be. It could be up a little bit, down a little bit, depending on, you know, we're going to hire the best people we can get, given the circumstance, albeit with an eye towards the budget, but if we have an opportunity to get an outstanding candidate and we can afford it, we'll do it. But that's fine to leave that number in there for now, it's just a way to model it. I'm going to skip the sped for a second. Chapter 222 expenses, Bonnie hit it on the head. Again, with the other expenses and the resources for ELA and science, to pull them out now just to see the model, that's fine. Again, we have a point of view about that, that, you know, we, we're not, we haven't really come to a conclusion on our side whether or not where that is on a priority list relative to where our funding problems might be, so we're going to have our own debates about that, but that's fine. So, all those are fine. Really, the issue is in terms of the, of the way we looked at the, the information that Bonnie created is the sped number. It, the way we saw it is, the information that Steve gave her or she's hit it on the head is she's looking at the actuals for 2015 as we know them right now. Things can still change because we're only about halfway through the year, but the actuals, as we're projecting them, are significantly higher than they were budgeted for. And if you look at the first page of what I provided to you tonight, if you compare what we budgeted in 2015 for out-of-district, we budgeted $1.7 million, and for case, we budgeted $620,000, for 2.35 million. The budgeted appropriation was $1.65 million. The budgeted use of circuit breaker was $750,000, so that nets out to about 2.4. So, we budgeted what we thought the cost was going to be. We budgeted what we thought we were going to get the money for it. Ties out to about zero. We're fine. Now, as we roll into 2015, our actuals are going up. We did have, we only budgeted $750,000 in circuit breaker. We had a late payment that hit our books for FY 2015 that we're going to use to meet the overage in the actuals, and we may very well use some school choice this year to cover the rest of it. We'll be fine. We have that money. We don't require any more appropriation to meet our 2015 budget. The problem is, is that that money needs to be spent, budgeted for and spent again next year, up to a degree. There is, we looked again at our numbers, and we, what we're budgeting for 2016 is $1.8 million, or almost $1.9 for out-of-district, $840,000 for case, that's $2.7 million. We have $700,000 that we're targeting in circuit breaker. That leaves us $2 million that we need to appropriate to pay our sped tuitions, our out-of-district and case tuition. If we don't get $2 million in the appropriation, we still have to pay those bills. We've already budgeted all of the circuit breaker that we're going to get. If we get more, we'll use more, but right now, the information we get from the state is telling us we're only going to have $700,000. We need a $2.2 million appropriation just to pay our sped bills, which is an increase over what we budgeted last year of $362,000, little less than the $400,000 we've been putting out there in, in our initial efforts to budget, but in line. You know, we've tweaked our, we've gotten more information from our vendors, more information on which particular students we have to provide services for. The number we have right now that we're fairly confident of is $362,000, almost $363,000 increase. We do not agree that we, it would be prudent to take more school choice money to pay that because the school choice money is going to go away. Eventually, we have to appropriate that money and pay those bills. I guess we could gamble that if we, hey, we take school choice and the kids matriculate out of the district, either by age or moving or whatever, that our amount we're paying in out-of-district and, and case tuitions goes down, but I wouldn't really think that's a good way to plan. Typically, what we've seen happen year after year is when our sped goes up, if it goes up during the year more than we budgeted for, we have reserves to deal with that, and we've successfully dealt with that year in and year out. We've never had to go back to a special town meeting to get more money to pay for out-of-district placements or case tuitions. But the assumption was is that the next year, we would get that money appropriated into the budget, so it got dealt with appropriately because circuit breaker does not reimburse dollar for dollar. It only reimburses a percentage of the dollars spent after a certain level of spending. So, it's just, it's not sustainable to always use circuit breaker. If you put in that $362,000, going back to the second page and the last column, and we agree on all the other figures, then down at the bottom, you can see the difference, the percent, the dollar decrease that we're looking for is $755,000. Minus the $550 that we have as a placeholder, we're out about $205,000. If you go all the way over to the left, and we add in all of the things that we have initially budgeted for, we're at a $942,000, almost $943,000 increase, minus the $550 that's in the placeholder, we're out close to $400,000. So, the way we're looking at it at the moment is our deficit ranges from a minimum of $205,000 to a maximum of $393,000. That's sort of the jump-off point for our point of view as a school committee that we'll continue to discuss how we think we're going to go about it, but also working with the FinCom and the board of selectmen to figure out where, you know, where we have the resources to meet these requirements that we have and what we need to fund.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is like extremely helpful. This is exactly kind of what I thought was going on for '15, but I just couldn't put my hands on the data. So, this is, this is extremely helpful. This is the first time that I'm, I'm seeing it, so I would like to go and run it through my...
And I'd like to, I'd like to just ask the one question, you know, you're saying
get this fixed.
I just wanted to say that each time we go through this exercise, it becomes clearer and clearer and clearer, and so great job to everybody for working together to get this done because you can get lost in this stuff real easy. And this is, this is the clearest I've seen it. It's understandable. Yeah, we're still off ways, but we'll work towards it.
Mike, what you presented tonight equates to a level staffing budget?
Yes. Well, so, I mean, let me pull my yes back. Depends on how you want to look at it. So if you take, if you look at the way Bonnie modeled it, she pulled out the, you know, we have a line item, or she created a line item, which is fine, of 100,000, which is 1.5 FTE for proposed new staff at Lipton High School. If we added that in, then no, we're not level staffed. Our staffing is going up a little bit. That is in response to some, you know, we've been audited and we have things that we're trying to do to meet the requirements of the audit. That's one of them. So that's important to us. It's not like we just want to add up 1.5. We feel this is a specific need that an outside auditing body gave us and said, hey, you really should think about doing this. You know, can we survive without it? We'll have that debate.
Well, it's actually the state that's requiring us to do that. It's not some third party that we can ignore for a year. So that one point, so 1.0 of that 1.5 FTE increase is for physical education at the high school, which the state mandates--
Because they're changing the number of credits required to graduate.
So that number there is, we feel, we have to do that one way or another. No matter what happens, that needs to happen for next year. That's what the state was coming and said. The other 0.5, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, is going to alleviate some of the class sizes that we've seen rise and rise year after year, especially in light of the FY 13 budget cuts that the schools endured. We saw the class sizes rise at one of our schools between 20 and 25 percent. And with more kids coming in, certain grade sizes, and all of that being considered, it's not sustainable. So when we talk about level service versus level staffing, we could get lost in the semantics, but the idea is, no, we're not trying to do anything, we're not, we're not trying to provide anything new beyond what we're required to do and beyond what we need to do to provide a similar quality of education that we're providing this year that we want to provide next year. There are a million and one things we'd like to be able to do next year that we're just, we understand the budget reality. We understand there's not enough money to go around, and so what you see before you is a pretty conservative budget. We're doing what we can, and all of these things that we're, that are on this list are, in our views and the view of the superintendent, necessary to take place. The K-5 resources, for example, that's $50,000. And, you know, we want to have a conversation, no new expenses, but if we don't, that's a change that's taking place, again, outside of our control. This isn't a want to have, it's a need to have because those are updated standards for our K-5 program. And obviously, you've probably heard that we've recently updated our curriculum standards in the Square Commonwealth, and our materials are almost 10 years out of date now. So we don't want our students to fall behind, and so that's not a want, that's a need to have because they're just not useful at this point in time. So we can have a conversation, whatever number we arrive to, we're going to do the best that we can, I think, in all of the departments to meet those needs that maybe we're not able to meet with the money we're provided. But that's where those numbers are coming from. This is not a wish list. This is a must have for this, for this year, for this coming year, that hopefully we'll be able to figure out one way or another. But I would say that, Mr. Carr, to your point, this is a very, we're not trying to do anything new that we haven't done in the past. We're trying to maintain a level services, I guess would be more accurate than level staffing, because there are new requirements, but the level of services, we're striving to remain the same this budget cycle.
Mike, the order you mentioned is where the state actually comes in and assesses for regulatory and statutory requirements and the compliance that the school district is having there. So your 1.5 that you're speaking of here is in answer to the latest audit?
Right. And the other thing to keep in mind about that particular staffing, especially the 1.0 that Alex talked about, is that is the minimum we need to do, along with offering inter-scholastic athletics as part of meeting the requirement. If we weren't able to do that, we'd be talking more like two, two and a half staff. So we've already tried to limit the impact of a new mandate from the state and be creative. We're not the only ones. We're not leading out on that. There are other districts that are considering the same option. But again, it's just a way of, it's a changing requirement. We need to meet it, and we're trying to do it in as fiscally responsible way as possible, but at the same time, it's a legitimate requirement. We think it has merit, so we're, we're not unhappy that we have to do it. We think it will have benefit to the kids, but we're just trying to do it in a fiscally responsible way that meets the requirement, benefits the kids, and doesn't hamstring us financially.
Would you say that similar to Bonnie's characterization of the Chapter 222 expenses as being unfunded mandates, this falls into that?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Exactly. And again, I think that's the point is, we're such a large organization relative to some of the other town departments, and we're not in charge of our own fate as much as we would like to think we are. Level services can be difficult for us to, it's a moving target. It's not, it's not as stationary as it is in other smaller departments who have less dynamic changes year in and year out. And we're seeing a lot of changes at the education level in the last five or six years at more rapid pace than we've seen in 25 years prior to that.
And a little over a year ago, we had a NIESC survey come through every 10 years, and it's the certification of the high school, and we were recertified with some work. But is it a librarian at the school part of the certification?
It definitely has, you have to have that position staffed. Yeah, there's no question about it. No question about it.
Thank you.
How long has Chapter 222 been in force?
Just this year. So that's, that's, as Bonnie said, it was an unfunded mandate. The state passed that law, the legislature passed that law last session, and I believe it came into effect, I'm not sure if it comes into effect FY 15, but we didn't have time to budget for it because it didn't come into effect until then, or there wasn't enough notice, and it was just sort of passed very quickly. But FY 16, I think, is the first year where we know it's coming. Last year, when it, when it came in, no one, brand new in Massachusetts, and no one really knew what sort of programs, what the requirements of Chapter 222, no one really knew how much that would cost. What we're seeing now is, now that we've had a couple of months as an education community statewide to digest it, there are different solutions that are popping up. And that $30,000 is typically what the cost of meeting that requirement is. Whether this, whether Chapter 222 came into effect in FY 15 and no one didn't, and no one knew how to abide by it in, you know, when it was happening, or whether it comes into effect FY 16, I don't want to speak without the superintendent here, but it is a new mandate from the state that's unfunded that we have to meet. So that's--
Unfunded.
Unfunded mandate. Yeah.
Kind of redundant. I haven't seen a funded mandate in a long time.
The new governor said he wouldn't do that to us. Yeah, it was a past administration. What are you talking about?
So as I look, or as I listen to what you just said, it's not, the numbers you have just given us and talked about, that's really your bottom line.
Absolutely. That's exactly what we're looking at. Alex said, we could, you know, I know you, the other departments did, you know, their mission budget. You don't want to know what that number is. You know, I mean, we, we would add a bunch of staff, we would add a bunch of programs, we'd add a bunch of technology resources. I mean, you know, there's any number--
You ran a bunch of technology. You've got some--
No, no. We would add more. You know what I mean? I mean, there's, there's opportunity to do so much more if we had a blank check. You know what I mean? And again, because we're large, I mean, we're doing, you know, it's a very broad thing that we're doing, so, you know, we could spend and spend and spend, and not just spend money just for the sake of spending money, but doing it in a way that would have, you know, a legitimate impact. But there's no reason to do that, you know, based on the current situation. You know, we, we, in our budget subcommittee meetings, we debated many other things that we would like to add to the list, and we just said, no, we can't do that right now. And it's not, it wasn't just us telling superintendent, back off, buddy, there's no possible way. He's very cognizant of where we are financially as a town, and, you know, he's bringing things up, saying, well, if we could, we would do these things, but we'll push these back. And, you know, they're in the pipeline because we want to be able to, you know, make sure that we're cognizant of what other opportunities are out there for our kids in our community, but we understand the reality of the situation. But I think you hit the nail on the head. We really feel like, you know, this is the baseline for us. We really can't go any lower than that. And even pulling out a couple of the items that Bonnie did for the moment is troubling for us. It really is. It's not like we can say, oh, wow, you've been living without that gym teacher forever. What's the problem? It's not that easy for us to say. You're right. We have been living without a gym teacher. We'll live out in front of the year. That's really, because of the requirement changes, it's really not that simple. It'll have an impact. We'll have to meet the requirement. We just might have to squeeze our staff harder than we really want to, or lose an opportunity to do something else in the building that we really feel is just as beneficial. So that's where we're at.
And last year, you'll remember, we, the district got lauded for being, what was it, as a best bang for your buck district in Massachusetts, one of the top 10 school districts where that spends a very low amount per pupil and still is able to provide a high quality education on not just test scores, but the quality and breadth of the curriculum and graduation rates, and all sorts of different ways of analyzing how a school department is doing, and there are a million different ways to do it. But this report indicated that Littleton is one of the best bang for your buck districts, which we're proud of because we know we're in lean times and we got to stretch ourselves thin. And this was, this report was to us, it was affirmation of what we already knew. But what that means too is, for a strong school district to continue to grow and continue to provide a high quality education, at some point, there needs to be some more investment. You can't keep running so far below average in per pupil expenditures and continue to provide the same level of service. And so we, we were looking at the numbers, and if we spent the state average per pupil, not even above the state average, if we spent the state average per pupil, our school districts would have another 1.5 to 2 million dollars.
And that's, that's not on the town.
That's not--
That's a reflection on the way the state's funding education and local aid too. I mean, it's not, it's not just us as a town saying, oh, we don't want to pay the average. That's got very little to do with it.
It has a lot to do with the decrease in local aid we've seen over the years, and the state isn't really helping us meet that goal. But that's good information for the selectmen, I think the whole town to have, is to realize we are a, just a school department that is doing incredible things with very little, like so many of our other departments in town, that are accomplishing a great deal with limited resources. So there's really, and I think we all understand this here, but I feel like we need to say it every year, there's no fair out there. There is, I mean, this is the bottom line. This is, you know, as bare as it gets, and everything else is going up. So, you know, I think we're, I feel comfortable that we're able to hopefully close this gap. It sounds like we're all on the same page about, you know, needing to go forward. But just for long-term thinking, I'm not sure how long this trend is sustainable. But we'll work through it this year, and we'll work through it next year, and every year after it, so.
Anything else, Mike?
Well, I'm looking forward to updating my reports and figuring out where--
Finance committee hasn't seen any of us yet. All right, it's okay.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Getting closer. Thank you. And there's no update on the capital.
The Finance Committee hasn't really got anything, so.
Yeah. So that 5B we don't need right now?
Nope. No further action on that tonight.
Okay. Item 6, May 4, 2015, town meetings insert warrant articles.
You can begin doing this tonight. The warrant closes on Friday, March 20. After tonight, you only have one more regular meeting scheduled to insert articles, and that'll be on Monday, March 9. So I'd suggest if we could go through the list, there may be some of the routine articles anyway that you could insert tonight and that we could have, we could earmark those which would require further, further discussion, but if it's all right.
Article 3 is a Light and Water Commissioners, is that from them or?
Yeah, article, in the special town meeting, Articles 3 and 4 are requests of the Board of Water Commissioners.
And they have voted on it, and they're all set with it?
I believe so. Bonnie met with Scott Edwards last week. I came up with a form of these articles, which I signed off on, so I, and Scott indicated that those were an acceptable form. So I, I would say that those two would, would be in a form that you could vote to insert them. On the special town meeting, just the first two articles, bills of prior years, which we put in, we may or may not have any, an article to allow for line item transfers, and the general fund budget, we'll have specific recommendations to make on that. Articles 3 and 4 of the special are the ones submitted by the Water Commissioners. Both have to do with funding the Cedar Hill Water Tank project. They put that out, they put it out to bid. I don't know if they have bids in hand.
Not yet. They're getting ready to walk--
Yeah. And in order to be able to award the bid and begin the work, that the funding that Bonnie has, has talked to, talked to the Water Department about, would be that they need to first move some funds in the current year budget, out of budget surplus into capital outlay for improvements. That's what Article 3 does to the tune of $160,000. And then they need a borrowing authorization for the project amount, which is, at this point, estimated $700,000. So those are the Water Department articles. Article 5 is a request from Bonnie to do additional borrowing authority for the roadway improvement project. We have quite a bit of road work that we'll be needing to do, and in order to undertake it, we would need to invoke borrowing authority. The debt service is programmed, that's either from Chapter 90 money, whatever, but you don't get to spend it in the first instance without authorizing the debt.
So one question on that. Chapter 90 and the short-term debt borrowing that was done previously in previous fiscal years, or is this a bump to 2 million?
This is a bump to 3. We've got two previous authorizations at a million apiece, and this would increase it to the 3 million that I'm going to need to execute new state.
Okay, so, and that will all be inside the levy, along with the short term and the Chapter 9?
All planted.
And the only kicker on that, and we'll have, we'll have further specifics about the new estate road project. We're at the 25 percent design phase. We're going to be setting up another meeting for the affected property owners soon. We're probably going to--
Can you get those things?
Well, you know, we're going to make a judgment call there about whether we can find the ground. Yeah, about, about when to do it, but that, but that the project, but that the project cost is escalating, and that we're now looking at, as Bonnie said, we're looking at maybe a $2.9 million cost of that project.
That's as much as Goldsmith Street. What are we doing? Are we doing any--
The drainage issues and the, the cost of the pipe to handle the drainage problems.
And that's not including any water service? Wow.
No. So, anyway, so we'll, we'll get, we'll get into that some more.
A million dollar a mile.
So, and then, and then Article 6 in the special, and I'd say that we, you know, this is definitely something that we could have a longer discussion about for the future, and I would suggest that we, when we do it, we have FinCom and the Community Preservation Committee. But we still have the ability to add more funds into the CPA fund, to the blended CPA fund to increase the base for state match. And I think there's actually some low-hanging fruit that we'd have, that there may even be general agreement that it ought to just go into the fund to get the money, that, and part of it is the, we have the money from the Reed Meadow Housing Project, which can only be used for affordable housing. We've got 46,000 in cash. We may have closer to 92 in the near future, but its purpose is affordable housing. There's no reason not to just put it in the, in the housing fund of the CPA and leave it there to collect the, to be able to get the matching funds. The other thing that I, category that I think we ought to have a serious discussion about is, we've got, we have accumulated 143,000 in unallocated cell tower funds. cell tower funds, which right now, the way town meeting, uh, votes are saying, that money gets used for, uh, open space acquisitions. If you wanted to move it in to the CPA fund, you could do that as well. If you want to have a broader policy discussion about it, you can, but I, I would, I would say that if, if all you wanted to do was move it from one open space bucket into another one, so doing would attract, um, you know, about fifty or sixty thousand dollars in the additional state matching funds. Um, and the third, and the.
The only thing that's, that concerned me on that is where it's coming from. What cell towers? Is it related to the towers that, you know, um, there's been discussion about the water department?
No, no, it's all just the, just the cell towers that, uh, that we've been using historically for, for open space acquisition. And then the, and then the third category is that, uh, that we could, um, in order to, to bring us up, if, if you accept the, um, forty-six thousand for housing, a hundred and forty-three for open space, then we still have a little bit more, all, another twenty-nine thousand and change, that we could go up to the, the maximum, uh, amount. We're allowed to add in, um, a total of, uh, four-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand in, into, uh, the CPA fund. That's our annual limit. We've already added two-hundred thousand, so we can add another two-hundred-and-fifty-four. If you wanted to go all the way up to that to maximize the state match, this, then, then the amounts that are outlined in article six would, would, would do that. And I, I, my take on it is that it's a rather, uh, it, it, it might be seen as a rather routine step to get state matching funds. There's no policy changes. Uh, there's no great debate, uh, that, that we need to have, uh, for having these funds be used for a purpose, for a different purpose than what they were intended. It would, and it would allow us to attack, uh, attract additional state matching funds. So I wanted to make the pitch for doing that in special town, um, town meeting.
So, handle those first, Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Special town meeting first.
I guess the only one that I, I would comment on, the rest are pretty straightforward, is the Community Preservation Committee and the policy that we're about to receive. Is it something that you think the board? Personally, I'd like to have discussion with the CPC and the finance committee prior to doing it, before we even have a placeholder. I mean, we got, we have the policy, we're gonna receive it, and so on. The rest of the articles, I have real no issues with.
You mind? Well, I, I think that, um, you know, we have the ability to modify it, but like you said, there are some low-hanging fruit here.
Oh, I agree.
That we can, we can put that money in and it's not controversial in any way. We know where, where the difficulties will lie in the discussion, uh, but some of that is not there, and, um, we should move to move, to, to put that money in there, uh, and move for that reimbursement. So, I would like to see the, you know, go ahead and see it put in there, and understanding the wording is gonna have to be changed based on those discussions.
All I'm thinking is just to have the other parties involved.
Yeah, and, and the, the timing, I mean, that, that the, uh, on the, on the policy, uh, the CPA, uh, the blended CPA policy, the, the next agenda item is to, is to introduce that policy document, and then two weeks from tonight, March 9th, you would be asked to approve the policy and adopt it. I'll be meeting with the finance committee and CPC next Tuesday night, March 3rd, so that by the time we're here on the 9th, for you to, you know, finalize the policy, I would have the, the hope and expectation that framework would be in place. We can invite those two other committees to that meeting and reach a joint agreement on what those dollar amounts should be, so.
All right, so, um, Mr. Chairman, moved at the board of selectmen vote to insert the following articles onto the warrants for the May 4th, Monday, May 4, 2015, special town meeting. Inform of said articles to be subject to approval of town council. Article one, uh, bills of prior years. Article two, board of selectmen, uh, fiscal year 2015 line item transfers. Article three, board of water commissioners, 2015, water enterprise fund transfers. Article four, uh, board of water commissioners borrowing Cedar Hill Water Tank, two-thirds vote required. Article five, board of selectmen roadway improvements plan supplemental borrowing, two-thirds vote required. Motion to be made?
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor of, of basically articles one through five as mentioned in the signature five by Senator Knight?
Aye.
All those opposed? Regular town meeting.
Okay. Um, the first, uh, let's see, article one is town officers, uh, article two, annual report, those are both routine. Uh, article three, revolving funds, this reflects the current, uh, structure we have. We had amended the, uh, dog enforcement bylaw at the special town meeting to increase it to twelve thousand dollars, and this reflects that, that higher number. Uh, the rest of them are unchanged. Article four is the, uh, it does not specify, it's the operating budget, it doesn't specify the recommendations, those come in the motion, so it's, it's fine to put the, the article in. We do not yet have finalized the enterprise fund requests for the, um, water commissioners or park and rec. We, we will need to get those, um, by two weeks from tonight, so we can have you insert those articles. Article seven, the capital budget reflects your, uh, your recommendations as voted at our, at our last meeting.
Finance committee hasn't had a chance to, yeah, right?
They haven't met yet. No, they haven't. The finance committee has not met, uh, they're, they're.
I saw the.
Going to meet on March 3rd at this point. And, and while we have a total number of four-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand for facilities, we do not yet have the recommendation of the facilities assessment prioritization working group, which is not, as far as I know, has not been able to meet because of storm and other, you know, weather constraints, so.
One-eight-six.
Pardon?
Page one-eight-six, park and rec.
Uh, park, yeah, park and rec, we do not have their request yet. Uh, I know, I know that they're, they're looking at bringing in a, a revised budget, so, uh, so we don't have that for, we don't have that for tonight. Article nine is a placeholder to fund any collective bargaining agreements that we reach by town meeting. Article ten is, is a, um, is the boilerplate language to allow for, um, amendments to the personnel bylaw. Those would come in two forms, and those could come in the motion. One is there, that there is, uh, a, a bunch of language proposals that Personnel Board has been working on, um, which we can brief, uh, the, the selectmen on, on, on March 9th. And the other would be whatever amendments to the, to the classification and compensation plans we come up with, hopefully to match what everyone is bringing, uh, forward from, from the unions. So we'd, we, we would have time in, in, in crafting the motions. We, um, well, it'd be nice to get as much work as we can, as we can by the close of the warrant, which is March 20th. The fact is, we've gone into town meetings and had all the detail in the motion, which would give us right, right up until town meeting to, to work it all out. Article eleven, stabilization fund, this is the, uh, amount needed, just under forty thousand dollars to match our policy, uh, that requires that we have, uh, five percent of the operating budget be maintained in the stabilization fund. And this would bring our total balance up to one-point-eight-seven million in stabilization. Capital stabilization fund, putting three-hundred-and-fifty thousand into it, that was your recommendation from, from our last meeting. Trust fund commissioners for school trust fund grants, they, the commissioners are offering a total of thirty-one-thousand-nine-hundred dollars, uh, for grants for the schools, and we're awaiting the school department's, um, uh, indication of what they want to spend those monies on. I know the trust fund commissioners were gonna be meeting tonight to, or meeting today to, or, or hoping to receive a request by today. Senior work program, we, we're, uh, continuing the same number of fifty-five thousand that we, that we, uh, allocated for the, uh, for that, uh, property, uh, the senior citizen tax work-off abatement program. Uh, placeholder article for mass DOT, chapter ninety funds, whatever the number is that they give us, that's what we'll put in the motion, uh, by, by the town, town meeting. Uh, rescinding unused borrowing authorizations, that, uh, Treasurer Steve Vinuti has identified nine million dollars worth of, uh, borrowing authority that we can wipe off the books, including going, you know, ancient history, going back to the, uh, Russell Street School Construction Project, where we had, where we had asked town meeting, uh, going into it for a total of thirteen-point-four million, and we didn't, only needed a fraction of that. Uh, and, and total borrowing authority also included what the, uh, the, uh, state match was. So now that that project is complete and closed out, we can, we can rescind the remaining unused borrowing authority, which was seven-point-nine million. So we want to take that off the books.
Good health clinic.
Uh, the, uh, article seventeen, uh, we'll have a, we'll, we'll put together some kind of placeholder language for inclusionary zoning for the prior discussion. Um, I, I think we probably need to have a further discussion about whether we want to do the affordable housing trust fund or, uh, or, or not. Um, uh, and I'd suggest we schedule that for a further, for a further conversation. The complete streets program in article nineteen, this is actually, this is actually a requirement, uh, that the way that we adopted our complete streets policy in December of 2013, the legislature passed, uh, the so-called, uh, complete streets program, uh, in April of 2014, and, um, and attached some funding to it. But they did establish the requirement that if you want to, if you want to be able to compete and get funding under their complete streets program, you have to vote to accept the statute. So we need to do, even though we've done the, the heavy lifting of adopting a policy and we want to go after the money, we also have to accept the state statute. And so we're, uh, so I would ask please to, to include article nineteen in that. Article twenty is, uh, is, uh, a proposed bylaw amendment for adoption of the so-called stretch energy code, which we're reviewing now with the Sustainability Committee. This is, uh, a language which has been drafted according to a, a model bylaw. One of the requirements for participation in the Green Communities Program is that you adopt the so-called stretch energy code. Building Commissioner Roland Bernier is more, more than fine with it. He has pointed out that what's now the stretch code, what used to be the stretch code is now the code, uh, for the building code, and we are surrounded by communities, uh, who have already adopted the stretch.
I'd like to get some education on this, too.
Yeah, we can, yeah, we can put, yeah, this, the, you know, this, this is a, doesn't need to be a pro forma, uh, article tonight. We can have a further discussion on it at the next meeting.
Just, it's something I've worked with all the time, with, with Development, with Mr. Shirley. And from when they adopted the policy and the development, you can actually see a change in the houses and who has icicles hanging down, and when they started the stretch code, there's that much of an energy saving. And it's like, it's like fourteen inches of insulation in the ceiling and the attic. They have to have a third party come in to do the vacuum and the blow test and all those other things. And only your furnace, your hot water has to be up to a certain grade, so it's, it costs more money to build a house, but you get an energy-efficient house.
I just, I know you talked about it with.
Yeah, so I'm happy to, happy to have a, a fuller discussion on that one at our next meeting. And we, we can also have a fuller discussion next time. We're still drafting. We, we diagnosed that we've got to have an issue that the highway department, uh, is, uh, is on the front lines dealing with, and that is, what do, what do you do when there's water coming from private property onto the public way? And I had, I had a by, and, and, and we don't have any.
We don't have anything?
We don't have anything, apart from the old nuisance statutes and, you know, which, which is fairly cumbersome. There's no ticketing, there's nothing.
What's a likely cause, like an accident, a pipeline, or washing your car on the street?
Yeah, poor, yeah.
New construction.
New construction, okay.
So, um, so we're, we're still reviewing this. What we want to make sure is we don't have a solution that is, that creates another problem. Uh, because there, apart from, you know, a master drainage solution, that there's no easy fix to this. Apart from spending another million dollars on new estate road, there's no, it's not an easily solved problem. So we're, we're.
That's for our town, too. That's not new estate.
Yeah, so we're, we're still, we're still looking at this. And then, uh, the, the last three articles are pro forma, uh, annual borrowing authorization, compensating balance agreements, and personal exemptions.
Twenty-four articles, I mean, come on.
Should we have an article about limiting the number of articles?
Let's put an article to limit the number of articles and have that article on number of articles. What article would that article be?
Just take note of those.
So, Mr. Chair, I think, and board members, if you don't mind, um, one, two, uh, three.
You can do four.
Four is the operating, because it's always in the, in the motion itself. Um, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, we'll wait for the, uh, finance committee to, at least, I mean, they haven't had an opportunity to look at our recommendations yet.
That was their idea.
It was their idea, but let's get the whole package as a package. That's just my suggestion, any, anybody else. Thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, nineteen, and twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. Fine.
Yep, that was it.
I'll do the, uh, Bernie?
Yes, please.
All right. Moved at the board of selectmen vote to insert the following articles onto the warrants for Monday, May 4, 2015, annual town meeting. With the form that he said, articles subject to the approval of town council. Article one, board of selectmen, town officers. Article two, board of selectmen, annual report. Article three, board of selectmen, fiscal year 2016, revolving funds. Uh, article four, finance committee and board of selectmen, FY16 operating budget. Article nine, fund collector bargaining, uh, board of selectmen, fund collector bargaining agreements. Article ten, board of selectmen, personnel board, personnel bylaw amendments. Article eleven, board of selectmen, stabilization fund. Article thirteen, board of selectmen, school committee trust fund commissioners, school trust fund grants. Article fourteen, board of selectmen, senior work program. Article fifteen, board of selectmen, uh, use of mass DART chapter ninety funds. Article sixteen, board of selectmen, rescind unused borrowing authorizations, two-thirds vote required. Article nineteen, board of selectmen, complete streets program. Article twenty-two, board of selectmen, borrowing authorization. Article twenty-three, excuse me, board of selectmen, compensating balance agreement. Article twenty-four, board of selectmen, FY2016, personal exemption amounts. Second. Moving second, put on the warrant, the articles still mentioned, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you. We'll have discussions about the remainder two weeks from tonight. Thank you.
Moving on to, this is what, seven A?
Seven A is to introduce, uh, the Community Preservation Act appendix to the financial policy. This is the document which the board was, uh, first briefed about at a joint meeting back in December, uh, with the, uh, the finance committee and this board and the Community Preservation Committee. It, it, this form is now, uh, recommended for adoption by the Financial Policies Working Group. Um, I'll be visiting with each of the three boards who were asking to adopt at this board, the finance committee and Community Preservation Committee. All three have provided input along the way. It's gone through several iterations, and, um, we think it's in a, a form which is now approvable. Uh, as far as I can see, we would be maybe the first community to adopt this kind of a policy with guidelines of how do you get all the parties together to agree on how the Blended Community Preservation Act should work. Community Preservation Act should work. But as we saw from special town meeting in November, we really need to be of, you know, have a common framework for how it's going to work, or else it's not going to work. So the, this set of policies is what I described as the roadmap, and what we get to do when you adopt the roadmap is go on a joint road trip, where the three committees would develop a blended CPA long-range plan, we would have a common vision of what the funds would be used for, and then make judgments about how much, annual judgments about how much money do we make available for the blended CPA fund. But that we don't spend the money on projects that we weren't going to do anyway, but that we try to make the most out of the ability to attract state matching funds.
If I read this right, I think on the second page, like the third paragraph down, it says, under the CPA, under the blended CPA, the town meeting can, it doesn't mean that they...
They do not have to, no, it's an upper, it's an upper limit. So it'll be an annual determination of whether you bring any funds forward. And some years, we might not have the money to, just, if, we've identified that certain funds, like mitigation funds, might be something you want to consider for putting into the blended CPA fund. But more than anything, you want to make sure that you, that the projects that would be funded, because it's still CPA, it would have to be one of the four buckets of CPA, housing, open space, historic, or...
Recreation.
Or historic preservation, that those would, that it would have to fit into one of those, and it would be something that you're going to do anyway. You're not doing it just because the money's there.
Is somewhere in this, I guess I'm having trouble understanding or seeing where there's a specific definition of blended as opposed to the non-blended, which is the surcharge that goes solely under the discretion of the CPC.
Yeah, and on page 3 or 4 of the project, of the document, where numbered Paragraph 1, Blended CPA Long Range Plan, it refers to, it says that the plan for use of the blended CPA fund shall incorporate any plan adopted by the CPC for the 1% CPA surcharge that it has. So it builds on, and we've made that assurance to the Community Preservation Committee, they start with the 1%. It's their 1%, this plan does not tell them how to spend their 1%. But, and moreover, we want to be guided by what their plan for the 1% says, which can help identify what the open space, housing, recreation, and historic needs are of the community. So it's, it is...
It was a key sticking point last call.
Yeah, and the Community Preservation Committee has signed off on, they were fine with this, with this form, and when I met with them at a meeting back on January 30th.
Well, I guess, when I read that, I read it a little differently. I sort of read it the other way, that the 1% is incorporated into the blended. But I think you could read that either way.
Well, but blended is, blended is two things. It's the additional municipal revenues of 2%, and it's the 1% CPA fund. So, and what we're saying is, we're, that the blended CPA consists of the total of 1, and 1 plus 2% equals 3%. The CPC is in charge of its 1%. And we want the plan for the blended CPA to be informed by the CPC's 1%. They're the lead dog on what the 1% is, that is entirely within their purview, but we want to know what it is, and we want to be able to incorporate that in the bigger plan for the use of the total funds, of the blended funds.
When we met as the Policy Working Group to pull this together, a lot of homework had been done already, presented to all of us. Keith certainly did a lot of work on it, Steve Benooty had an opportunity to take quite a bit of hack at it. Betsy was involved also, Chairman of the FinCom, I was there, along with other people on the committee. And we looked at this, and the way this was looked at is the three board slash committees would come together for that long-range plan, and when they do that long-range plan collaboratively, as Keith said, the 1 plus 2 is all a piece of that, as for consideration. So in other words, there's nothing exclusionary, it's all inclusionary. Now, the CPC does not forfeit any of its statutory or bylaw rights by any of this. This all builds upon more collaborative effort between the three boards.
Yeah, in fact, at the end of the day, it's not the Selectmen or the Finance Committee who has to grant permission for even the use of the additional funds, the 2%. It's only the Community Preservation Committee under the statute that can do that. So we wanted to create a framework for how do we reach that point? How do we, how do we not, how do we have a common understanding of how the additional, of whether there should be an additional 2% or not? And so that the Selectmen and Finance Committee can recommend additional money be put in for purposes that the CPC would then be agreeable to having come out. And the answer was to have those three boards collaborate on what the vision is for the blended CPA plan, but that that plan has to be built on the 1% plan that the CPC has sole jurisdiction on. So CPC is fine that this doesn't tread on their toes, that they were, that there was no objection voiced at the CPC meeting.
Nor at the planning, nor at the policy meeting.
And in which the CBC members were, you know, very active participants. So I think this, I think this respects their authority, I think CPC is fine that this respects their authority, and that through our collaborative efforts gives them access, if we do it correctly, to more money than they would otherwise be able to direct.
Well, I can't say that I'm convinced, but it's, you know, clearly the consensus to go with it as it is, so.
The good news is we got a town lawyer.
I just, you know, my concern lies with making sure that we don't cross the line of what is CPC authority versus the other. We all have to work together, and when we're each putting a piece in the pot, we all have to be complete agreement when we're done. But the CPC, the members are appointed, well, some are designated, but others are appointed by the Board of Selectmen. And so I just, I'm concerned that the level of autonomy that should be retained gets retained. That's all my concern is.
Well, Keith mentioned being at the CPC meeting, and I can attest to the Policy Working Group, Betsy asked point direct to the CPC members present, are you content with this? Yes. I hope that addresses your concern as far as the continued separation of the same lanes.
They voted to recommend it, I'm going back to them to get their official, now that we have the final form, which is in a virtually unchanged final format. I'm asking for their vote and FinCom's vote next week. And the Selectmen can, you can take your final vote on March 9th. And I'd point out that at least the format of what we're talking about tonight for the, for special town meeting Article 6, puts money in and doesn't have any strings attached to how it comes out. So that is, we're putting, you know, and I think that that's a good thing. In this case, we're saying, let's take affordable housing funds and put it in the affordable housing CPA bucket, and just, and without reaching a prior agreement about how the money comes out. Who gets to say how the money comes out? Well, you know, the statute says, CPC does. And all that we want to have is a common understanding through our blended CPA long-range plan about what are the priority uses for that money.
When's the meeting?
Next Monday, next Tuesday night.
So before our next meeting?
Yes.
So you'll be able to have a...
Yeah, so I'll have, so, I mean, weather permitting, I hope to be able to say two weeks from tonight that both of those committees have already adopted this in its final form.
Can you add a fifth category to CPC? Is there no removal?
No. I wish. It is part of...
Ready for motion there, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to receive the proposed CPA append, I'm going to skip it, I'm drawing a blank, to the Financial Management App, Appendix?
Appendix, yes.
Appendix, thank you. 9 o'clock.
Just kind of...
Appendix, to Financial Management Policy, for integrating the so-called Blended Community Preservation Act form funds into the town's financial policy procedures and processes as recommended by the Financial Policy Working Group on February 10, 2015, and to schedule the adoption of said appendix for the Board of Selectmen's next regular meeting on March 9, 2015. Second.
Moved in seconded with two appendixes. All those in favor, Speaker President saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moving seconded to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you very much for watching.
Saved my life.
Thank you.
Saved my life.